...year that the PTO has asked for permission to use the gym so we don't have to go. Will we get to that part?
I'm fired.
You can do it. Okay. Ms. Dial.
Hello. We are in the final stretch of the school year. It's been a really positive year. Some really nice professional development for our teachers. We've talked a lot about wellness, particularly in our SAC group this year. And we are making a lot of plans already for next year, which is very exciting. Extending the work we did this year, particularly in wellness, extending it to the community at large, going beyond students. So that'll be a big focus for us again next year. Are there any questions from the report or anything else?
Do we talk about school improvement plans today?
No, we don't.
You can come back and join us. Yeah? Comment? Well, it comes from the school. I just, in terms of wellness and stress, I was really glad to see that was coming up as a goal. And I just think particularly in the younger grades, just continuing to really be sensitive to the trickle down of the whole race to nowhere that particularly in our community, most of our students are coming in so enriched that building in that time to pause particularly for play. Play, you can't have too much fun in elementary school. That's what I just want to say about that. So I'm very glad to see that's high on everybody's radar.
It truly is. We'll continue that. Today, we had our incoming kindergarten families here. We had four different sessions. And we talked a lot about the kind of culture we're trying to create for students in terms of helping them become resilient, creating a safe community to try new things and to not succeed and pick themselves up again. And try to do that for staff as well. So I think we're trying to spread the word.
Most I love the staff meeting we guys all did on things. It's great. Central office, any questions on the central office report? There's a few things if you want to.
Yes, a couple. First and foremost, we just really want to thank the taxpayers in the town of Dover for supporting our budget and the budget for next school year. We just want to publicly through the television broadcast, thank the taxpayers and the citizens in the town of Dover for supporting us all year in fiscal 15 and certainly moving into fiscal 16, both for the operating budget as well as capital. So thank you to and to school committee for assembling and to the business office for putting the budget together. Terry, Karen, and Chris, thank you very much. There are just a few items. We include in your packet an assessment report. It's an interesting piece of reading. It just takes a look at some of the assessment measures across the Commonwealth. It's phase one of what will be another, there'll be subsequent reports to come out. But I think it's an interesting piece of reading for members and for the consuming public as well. The Park forums that are open to the public. The only point on that is that I was in communication today with the DSC and they asked if they're going to be televised at all. And they are going to have a DVD recording of the event. So I've ordered three DVDs, one for each school committee, so that you can watch that for your viewing pleasure off hours. If you want to learn more about Park, you could certainly do that. And then we looked into last week through Mrs. Hunter, we got an update on the Minuteman project and we put an item in there on that. On the FEMA reimbursement, on the status of the fiscal 16 budget, you have some information there. Most recently, the Senate Ways and Means Committee has come out with its budget for fiscal 16. So things are looking okay at the state level, both from the governor's budget as well as the House and the Senate Ways and Means. So you have some items there. And then we put a piece in on the new earned sick leave law, which while it has been passed, it has not yet been adopted in the town of Dover. So that's up to cities and towns to actually adopt. It's an interesting law. City or town has to actually adopt the law before the law is enforced. We wanted you to have some visibility on that particular topic.
Would that, Steve, can I ask you a question? Would that override anything that was in the teacher's contract?
No.
Intimately engaged?
Like a lot, like the we're waived on that. This is like the bare minimum.
Okay.
This would feel like part-time.
It's like what, five days or something like that?
Yeah. This is like people who don't get any.
Anything where it's.
You'll remember that was in the bus when we negotiated the transportation contract that came up as a pressure point.
Okay.
So that was it from my aspect of the report.
Quickly on Park. So I read in this fall, they're going to potentially give you a decision on Park at the government level. Does that mean potentially then the following year if they decide to replace MCAS with Park that would happen then?
Could it be the role of?
Is that the plan? It would be the spring of 16.
Or they could hunt into another year based on feedback or to just. They're not going to say yay. And if they said yes, it would potentially be enacted. They wouldn't necessarily say, oh, it's dead. Or would they potentially do that?
It keeps saying, no, it's dead. I mean, it's up to the year for the board to decide at the DSC what's next. And they're gathering all this information from the constituents and then will make hopefully an informed decision.
Based on also this past year's feedback.
Right. And that was included in my report.
Yes. Perfect. Thank you.
Actually heard from another, from one of the other school committee chairs today who said, well, would there be action on the part of the school committee? The answer is really no. I mean, it's a decision at the state level and we would have to, you know, either MCAS is sunsetted and that's it, or MCAS remains in place. But as Karen has alluded to also in the past, there'd be some kind of other iteration of MCAS even Park is not adopted. So.
And I probably would suggest it would look Park-like, where students would be asked to look at multiple versions of a text, synthesize the information, and do some writing. And that's currently not in play for the MCAS. So less multiple choice, more inquiry, problem solving, those types of things. But we want to gain more information on.
And more technology utilization potentially?
It would probably be online.
Any questions on the faculty meetings sections or report? Anything to highlight?
The wellness, the wellness implementation, some of that we're going to review in selectivity, nutrition and social and emotional wellness, which includes the challenge success initiative. And those will be posted at the DS website. We'll also have our next meeting on June 1st to finalize those documents. I also wanted to highlight under nutrition that Janelle Madden, our food service director, has gone with the metro area planning council on a farm-to-school grant because she does so much with Wissen Farm and bringing in local sourced foods to the schools and using now in from scratch cooking. It's an impressive look at what we do at Food Service, so I wanted to highlight that.
So you have a copy in your packet of the breakdown from the special education parent survey that we did for chickering parents in particular. As I broke down each of the schools, I looked for patterns of the kinds of things that we are doing really well, the kinds of things that we need to make improvement on. The chickering results really lined up very closely with the overall results that I shared at the joint meeting. And so we are going to continue with the goals that I set based on those overall results to do more professional development for staff around differentiation of instruction, have time, more time for staff to spend with general and teachers going over IEPs in detail, answering questions, and spending more time meeting regularly is one of our other goals. But again, the survey results are so overall positive that the staff is doing a really great job. We just looked for some general patterns of things that, based on parent responses and comments, that we can work on. But everybody's doing a great job. Parents are very satisfied with their child's special education services and those things. So we're moving forward. Been in contact with Margaret Reed, who we've set up for our first round of professional development on September 30th with the region. And then we'll be talking about doing some things like that at the elementary schools as well.
And for the audience, we, these findings were actually from the survey we presented at our joint meeting a couple of weeks ago. So with all 16 school committee members, we actually spent quite a bit of time talking about special ed and the reorganization and such. So that's why it's a little brief on tonight's meeting because we talked about it as a group. And each of the committees now just got their individual survey results. But it was a, we had a great discussion and kudos to Terry and her department for all that happened this year.
Thank you. I had lots of help.
Terry, you plan to post the results on the website?
I do. So the individual school results will be posted on the schools' websites now that they've all been presented to your school committees.
And is the bulk, like a different topic, the bulk of the work for the integrated preschool is going to be mostly happening over the summer, going on right now?
We've started the process. We had a wonderful parent visit, so for incoming preschool parents and their children. And it was so well organized by the special education staff, Carrie Call and the occupational therapist, the speech and language pathologist, got together, they did a fabulous job of organizing a little treasure hunt for the students, a story time, different activities in their classrooms so that they can get used to the space and meet some of the staff. They did a great job and it was a lot of fun. We had a great turnout. I think there were only two parents that were not able to make it.
So there'll be 15 students though, right? 15 students in the class?
16.
16. Okay. Fairly positive buzz in the community. I know that there's at least one parent was organizing through the Dover Math Association, a get-together of playgroup for kids who will be starting. So I think it's a very, how's it feeling, a strong investment in working with them. Can't wait to hear about it.
Mary's side. Thank you. Are you doing, are you must take tonight?
Do you want to be must take?
No.
Who's on first? So Ms. Tag, although, and she's expected, Chris is expected back to work next Tuesday. She's recovering, she was in a car accident and she's recovering. So she was able to put her report together. And in the business manager's section, we're reporting a potential end-of-year surplus to the tune of $198,000. Keeping in mind that the lion's share of that is the contract legal settlement line. So really, you'd have to net that out of the calculus here. And that really the savings are attributable to utilities, transportation, and some other miscellaneous lines. What administration would like to bring for discussion tonight is the notion of, and you'll recall, this has come up quite a bit through our capital discussions, and we're so grateful for Dover Capital and Dover Warren for supporting this new approach. We have some failing projectors in the classrooms. We have 15 remaining 3M projectors in the school building. And while they're not, they're various stages of failing, and there are 15 of them, they're being replaced with the Epsom machines. And of the 15, we had for fiscal year 16, we had taken the cost of replacing five of those and we had put that into the operating budget of the school into the new line called technology hardware. So you might remember from the December meeting, we talked, December 17, 16 something, when we talked about that. So where we're ending the year favorably, so that we don't get into a situation where instruction is interrupted or compromised through a machine that may fail, we would like to consider the replacement of somewhere between five and potentially 10 projectors between now and the end of the year to make sure that we have the right equipment in the classrooms, close out the school year, making sure that when we open at the end of August, we're ready to rock and roll and we don't have, you know, failing machines and we don't have teachers coming back to machines that have been dormant, obviously, over the summer. So would like to be able with the, obviously, discussion brought from Assistant Torrey to be able to have Anthony Rataco assess and potentially do up to, replace up to maybe 10, but maybe fewer than that. And then next year, in this fiscal year 16 budget, we have money for the other five. So potentially a year from now, we'll be looking at having the entire building outfitted with the Epsom machines and hopefully in a situation that does not compromise any instructional momentum. So it's within your approved budget, but certainly we want to bring to Assistant Torrey.
Right. To make sure everyone's comfortable doing that. I, also, Anthony mentioned that some of the whiteboards themselves look like they may start failing. So it'd be, it's nice that we have some money in the budget next year. So even if we end up doing all the projectors in this year, there's still going to be a need for a whiteboard replacement next year, but maybe another piece of the puzzle. I think the fear was we know that there was some projectors that weren't working this year that sort of delayed some of the teachers getting up to speed, and so we don't really want that. Since we have, you know, the funds to take care of it makes sense financially, I think, to go ahead and take the five that are band-aided together right now and have them do a really thorough look at the other ones and take care of it sooner rather than later.
Makes sense to me.
It's about $2,200 per classroom. What's essentially replaced is the arm of the machine and then it's made HDMI capable.
Yeah. I mean, being in the classroom is critical for learning and to be interrupted would be a pause for the activities and everything. So it makes sense to be ahead of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else on?
I don't know if anything else popped out of the report?
I'm just going to just move Laura's here too. So we have the, I think, the change in the professional development with the teacher's contract, how the course reinforcement. So I think that's, you know, having sign on that committee, I just want to make sure we're very proactive in not having any of that money left over. So I was even thinking, driving over here today, you know, we sort of, it's one of those things where you have to sort of estimate before, you know, before it's all said and done. But I would actually say that, you know, be a little aggressive and if we are short a little, that's better than turning it back. Because I, that was one of the key things we talked about and I'd hate to see any of that money left on the table at the end of the year.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I know that's sort of like thing that we're trying to juggle how to estimate, but.
Well, we've been asking for that. Twizzles are due this Friday. So it gives a little bit of time if you don't get enough.
Because I see, as far as if I'm looking at this correctly, Chickering didn't have any teachers in the first round receive any class during the first round. So I know some will be coming in on the June 1st, but clearly not the 18,000. So that's where, you know, that's where that money then flows, but has to be used by June 30th for, you know, PD days. That's where, I think, once you get into your routine, you'll know how much sort of that you can estimate, it'll be easier. But this first year, I think it'll be a little touch and go. But that's, if you see error on the side of a few too many days, then not enough to use the money.
And also for Mrs. Atkinson, for the purpose of the DSCA, so that was, that was a really great negotiation point that came up through the contract and where teachers were really hopeful that that PD money would be able to be afforded over a greater breadth of teachers. And that was the total design structure behind that. So it'll be great to be able to encourage teachers to be able to perform proposals so that money can be used in the spirit in which it was intended, which was for PD before June 30th. Because that would be faithful to the tenants that were negotiating in the contract. So whatever you can do from the DSCA perspective, I would talk it up, just remind them if you that was the spirit of the negotiation.
Right.
The other thing, just on the report from Christine, is that the, you know, the gym floor will be done this summer. That'll be, you know, a big capital project that was supposed to be done last year. We're actually having all the gym floors done. The panel does not have a wood floor, but the gymnasiums at the region and the Chickering. So we're actually doing three gym floors this summer. And the only other item is just, and it's actually in your, in the talking points, it's in your operating budget, is just to remind the Chickering, the Dover School Committee that the increase for administrators for fiscal 16 is a 2% increase. So I brought that to each school committee's attention this month. You're having the last meeting of the month of May. So I just wanted to let you know that's not a request. It's in the talking points. It's very much baked into the, into the contract, into the budget, rather. So we just wanted to make sure we were also on record reminding you that, you know, as we roll out fiscal 16.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Any self-committee updates? Perfect. Moving on to one of our presentation items, the Dover Sherborn Evaluation System update. I think we have some information in our packet.
You do? I don't know who's on first. I know that there was a request for some information on district determined measures. That was one topic that some members wanted to hear a little bit about. Unfortunately, Assistant Torrey, I don't think, I know she's not here, but she was definitely the, one of the members who was interested. Laura Torrey has been a faithful member of the Evaluation Committee for now going on four and a half years. So she gets it all through the meetings, but there was a desire to kind of share with school committee. So I'll just tee it up a little bit in saying that we are actually in the second year of implementation of the evaluation system. So 50% of the teaching faculty, we have 204.1 teachers system-wide across the three school districts. And half of the teachers rolled onto the system last year on what's called a one-year self-directed growth plan. And for the most part, educators at the end of that year had sufficient summative ratings to be able to go into year one of a two-year self-directed growth plan, which is all defined in the educator evaluation system. And then Karen could jump in certainly in speed, kind of shorter, to the whole near dear her heart is the QPO system. But this year, the second half of our teaching faculty system line in here, Chickering, are rolling onto the system. So it was a two-year roll-in into the system. So if you didn't start in the system last year, you start this year. Everyone starts in the system on what's called a one-year self-directed growth plan. And then from that, it's quite individualized in terms of the plan on which one educator will find himself thereafter. And that's sort of teeing it up a little bit. A couple of the big things that happened, it spun off that of the Qualified Peer Observer Program, feedback, the surveys that are out, and then district determined measures are big. So maybe Laura can jump to DDMs. Karen, do you mind speaking to QPO?
It's a great, there's a text document, it's on page 39 and 40 of your packet, but also a graphic that Cheryl Chase here at Chickering, actually, her mind thought this way, and it's a great graphic to describe the educator evaluation process. So you can see a teacher then, after they've been on that self-directed growth plan, can go to year one of a two-year plan. And in that year one of a two-year plan, I know there's a lot of years and ones there, an educator sets goals, but then conducts, can engage with a qualified peer observer. And over the past eight weeks, we've trained a cohort of 23 educators across A-12 in the Qualified Peer Observer sort of protocol, which is how do I interact? How do I conference? How do I give effective feedback? Those types of things. So that educator will work with the QPO, will pair them in the fall. They'll step forward to say, I'd like to be paired with a qualified peer observer. I want to focus on this goal or this idea. In my classroom, the QPO will maintain a monthly log, but the educator who is working with that QPO will maintain more of a log and reflections on what happened during those monthly sessions. So I think this is a great way for us to engage in peer collaboration. It's a highly evolved model and it's impressive to have in play here. Someone who will then go into the second year of the self-directed, year two of a two-year self-directed growth plan is somebody who went into the system up to the two-year plan this year. That's an action researcher. Educators can choose what they would like to do. They'll still set goals and they'll meet with their evaluator about those goals, but they can conduct further research. They will also have three observations, formal observations by their evaluator in that segment. So this, this graphic really is a great way to explain it. If you wanted more text, you can look at the document prior.
Pretty nice, huh? You have a name this one?
Yeah, no, it's.
Really cool.
So if someone, so we'll slow on the uptake. So if someone was evaluated, Mrs. Smith was evaluated last year, this year she's doing the one-year, and assuming that was all fine, she's doing the one-year self-directed growth plan? No, she's doing the yellow.
Year one.
Year one.
Yellow, yes, I love it. The yellow. You can't see it, but it's yellow. It's year one of a two-year self-directed growth plan. Correct.
But this year, we didn't have a QPO.
No, we did not.
So this year, so you did the green.
So you actually, it was just setting, it was setting goals and reflecting on your goals.
Right. So this year, anyone who was evaluated last year did the green, well, and were fine, they did the green this year.
Yep.
And then next year, they would be blue?
Next year, they will be blue. That's correct.
So Cheryl, this is really working.
Which is, it's very helpful. Which is three observations, goals, and action research.
And then if they are again at that.
Proficiency.
Proficiency level, then the year following, they would be in the self-directed with the QPO.
That's correct.
Okay. So they'll be alternating over the year.
That's right.
That sounds great. And I hope that it's exciting for the QPO faculty members. I hope they find that very, I hope that for them, it will be professionally exciting and rewarding and it's a great way for them to be working as those mentors.
They met as a team last Friday to talk about next steps and how to roll it out in presentations to the staff. So it was quite an engaging conversation.
So all districts or?
All districts.
All districts. So could somebody, would you only get someone from your building or would you possibly have someone from another building?
You could have someone from another building.
Call issue.
That's, no, that's great. That's great.
And it could be across grade levels, across disciplines. Someone who, you know, maybe a special educator at Chickering really wants to link up with a special educator for kind of help for whatever reason. Could be because of the new integrated preschool. And that could be a great thing. So it's really a very fine platform.
It is. Yeah.
And thank you, Mrs. Chase, for the design element here. She's a new member of our Evaluation Committee. She's paid her dues.
So this is going to talk about just a little bit about DDMs?
Sure. Laura, do you mind? Sure.
The DDMs provide valuable information for us. We identify assessments that, for the most part, have already been incorporated into our annual assessment cycle. So in that sense, they were already familiar and already guiding our instruction. So we continue with those. At a conference last year, they were talking about a slight change. Initially, the idea was that we'd have the same DDM over time so that we can compare the results of that. And there's a little bit more flexibility, which I think is helpful, because if we find that one DDM is not serving our needs, we're not locked into that over time. This summer, we've begun on doing a review of assessments. Steven, your report, you had noted that elementary schools typically have the highest number of assessments and that is a challenge in terms of taking away some instructional time. So we want to take a really close look at those, particularly in the LA. We've asked grade-level teams to discuss that with our literacy specialist in the next two weeks during their common planning time and then dedicate some PD time over the summer to taking another look at that.
So would that be things like the dibbles would fall into that? Right. That would be a DDM and what you're doing with that particular.
Which were, is Abe's web.
Abe's web. Okay.
So at the end of every, when the system's up and running statewide, every licensed educator in the Commonwealth will have a performance rating and will have a rating on his or her impact on student learning. What informs that rating on student impact learning is really this whole platform called District Determined Measures, DDMs. Data is supposed to inform that rating and you calculate a performance rating through all the mechanisms. So the state, not surprisingly, this whole DDM notion has been very much, it's been very fluid, somewhat controversial in a lot of, it's become, for some districts, it's become a major issue in contract negotiations. It has really kind of taken on a life form of its own. So districts across the Commonwealth are right now being granted the opportunity to say, here's where we stand with district determined measures. Now, through the good work of all the teachers, administrators, and Dr. LeDuke's office, we're in pretty good stead in Dover Sherborn in terms of district determined measures. But nevertheless, our Evaluation Committee, which has been together for years and years now, decided at its last meeting that we would like to ask the state, for purposes of public schools in Dover Sherborn, for a little more time to work on really honing our district determined measures and connecting them more intrinsically and intimately with student learning goals. of public schools in Dover Sherburne, for a little more time to work on really honing our district determined measures and connecting them more intrinsically and intimately with student learning goals. So we applied for that about a week ago or so, and we'll be sharing fairly some of the results of that appeal. Simply because it's not that we feel like we're not where we need to be, we just need a little more time to make sure that it's an earnest effort where we're looking.
So the last year, they delayed it, so is it really in effect for next year or maybe?
No, you can delay it.
So you can, you can choose to delay. They delayed it for everyone.
Right.
They delayed it, yes. Right. So it's still, yeah, that's better. Or do you feel like, I mean, one reason we assess more frequently with elementary schools is because there's, there's a lot of growth, and a student, a first grader's reading can change so dramatically from September to January to, you know, huge leaps can happen in very small amounts of time, very suddenly. So you want to keep, keep track. So the challenge, I would think, with something like this is, is it, the whole point of district determined measures, ideally, is that it is helpful. So it feels like, my impression is this is coming pretty organically, so that it is helpful? Is that an accurate perception on my part that?
The assessments themselves absolutely are helpful to us. I think what we want to take a closer look at is the frequency of administration. So for example, with a reading assessment, teachers are reading with their students every day, so they have a really good sense of where their students are, and don't necessarily need an assessment to provide that information to them. So then we look at, do we administer that assessment to all students three times a year, or do we just do it with the students who have concerns about, or who are not showing the growth that we would typically expect? So really looking at those check-in points.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
I'm sure Mrs. Doherty will watch your tape.
She'll read them.
She will, you know she will.
Great, okay. Next up is the family handbook, and I have to say, because there's only like two pages in here, that Janice and Debbie have come to break down on this here. So thank you, because it's such, so refreshing. You've got to have 20 pages to look at. So do you want to highlight sort of the changes, just for us? I mean, we had them in our packet, but you just want to highlight.
I think the most significant ones were the legal changes that have been made at all of the schools. We decided to make a slight change in our approach to having kids ride buses. We had some kids who wanted to take seven kids on the bus with them for a playdate, and that didn't work in terms of our capacity on the bus. So, you know, easily rectified, but we just wanted to make sure that that was clear and understood in our handbook.
The text had been there in past versions, but we, some of it dropped in the past year, so we wanted to get that clarified.
Yeah. Bullying and harassment protocol has been changed, and again, that's, that's uniform across all the schools.
Correct.
Does anyone have any questions about the changes? So these will just be incorporated into the existing handbook for next year. I assume you changed off, like the whole thing, you changed off. But you did a pretty good job of, didn't you? Generally just refer to people in their titles as opposed to names, like we meet with the principal, the assistant principal, the nurse, so you don't have to do that.
Yeah, the opening page is left, doesn't have all of them.
Right. Okay, so we do need to approve these, so can I get a motion to approve the proposed changes as presented? So moved. I don't think we've ever done it, like, and we're approving it.
Usually it's after you've done the changes that we just talked about.
It's like, gee, that's refreshing. This is usually a three-minute process. So, so moved. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had actually put the school committee's goals update on here, hoping that we have everyone. If you remember back to that meeting, oh my gosh, was it Marcus? Remember, we had all these great ideas for goals?
I do remember.
I think I was supposed to do one of them, but I totally didn't do.
So we had, if you, I went back and read the minutes, we, it became a really busy year, so we had set some goals for ourselves to work on. One of them being like the state of the, state of the school. So that'll be something that will continue. I think, yeah, could you just, you want to stick around and help us on the outside?
I was gonna say, I'm off.
To do that. We looked, and some things that we had sort of deferred to next year, which we can talk about again next year, are, we were going to do a self-evaluation of ourselves, we were going to put some more goals and mission statements and stuff up on the website and use that more, which probably makes sense that we didn't given that their new website had been rolled around. So that, that probably was a nice idea.
We knew that.
We knew that, that was going to happen. So we will go back when we reorganize for next year. And because we had some really good goals, which the year just sort of got a little worse.
We gave Laura and Adrian an awful lot.
Yes, exactly. So I just wanted to make sure I brought those back to our attention, because we did spend about an hour working on revising those, and they were, and they were really worthwhile, so we'll revisit those. That's all I have to say on that.
Okay, my gosh, this is a flyby. It's like our last meeting. I don't, okay. Do you want to?
Sure. Well, Mrs. Dennison, this is your last meeting, and we just really want to thank you profusely for the leadership of council you provided on the Dover School Committee. We thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and getting to know you as a person, and we've really valued it, to take out your instructional perspective on so many issues. As a practitioner yourself, you really lent us a really informed lens, and we have deeply appreciated that. So we want to present you with your apple officially.
And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It has been truly a pleasure and a privilege to serve the Dover School Committee. And since this is on the tape, the town of Dover is so lucky to have Dr. Doherty as chair and the whole, all the members that I've served with over the past three years, I really, I, we may not meet our goals, but I'd say we are, we are a highly.
We get the job done.
We get the job done.
Exactly.
I'd say a lot of, you know, I've learned from everybody on this committee, and people bring great insights, and I, there is no one who's not served on this committee, and their primary goal is to have the best school we can have for our town. And it's, people aren't going to put them, it's so, we have a lot of, yeah, it's cool.
Well, as we discussed the other night, a lot of people come back, so we told her there would be less, he's open next year.
She looked a little startled.
No, no, she said she would take a year break and maybe consider coming back. Because I will say, it's been very comforting to have someone with an educational background sit up here with us, and we don't always have that. And so it is fairly comforting to know that we've got someone who's on the other side, who's been there, and can, which gives us that perspective, because, you know, we have parents' perspective, and county perspective, and legal perspective, but not always true educational, so thank you for adding that to our group. Is it my pleasure?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the consent agenda tonight, we have our minutes for March 5th, and the approval for the Dover PTO to utilize our space for their auction next year. And I'll turn it over to you guys, just sort of get some update on what plans are and what you're looking forward to doing.
Sure. Okay, so we, we are here to request permission to hold the Chikering PTO by annual auction at the school on April the 2nd, 2016. I've, I've met with Deb and by proxy Laura. She was, did lots of interviews on the day, and reviewed our plans with them, so I believe I have your support. We, we have a theme in place, which will be the movies, movie stars, Hollywood, with a catchphrase of lights, camera auction. So initially, last year, last year was a really fabulous event, we had great attendance. It's a big community event as well, it's not just a, you know, a niche group. We have a huge community at Chikering who all get involved in the auction, which makes it so much a fun event as well, and obviously a huge part of our fundraising agenda. Everybody likes doing it at the school. It's, it's become a great venue, it also enables us to maximize our goals of community and financially. So I, I will request that we hold it here. I will, if, if that is granted, I will be requesting like a license from the town as well. Rather preemptively, I've booked a meeting with Chief McGowan.
Well, I, I hope that the PTO knows that school committee totally, you know, promotes this and approves this. I think I give a lot of credit to the people a couple of, like, already now, four or five years ago, who went into the bylaw change.
Yes.
To allow this to happen every year. So I doubt you'd ever.
Yeah, we'd make great.
Pushed back. Regardless of who's sitting here, because that was a huge initiative that they approved, and it makes complete sense, because I was on the other side when we were having huge catering bills go, you know, all the money was going out to the venue and the catering. I was just happy to see it all sort of stay here.
Thank you, yes, they were outstanding.
Any questions from?
That's fantastic. Look forward to next year.
Yay. Should be fun. So do I have a motion, or any, any comments on the minutes? This is a task, because there are a few things that need to be changed. I'll take care of it.
Is that worn?
Yeah. Yeah, no, there's, there's a few holes. The tape ran out, so.
Oh.
So, but I'll, I'll fill those in.
But our last meeting was really, really short, too.
Yeah, it was. It's just some of the, the consent agenda and some of that, sort of fill in the holes. But do I have a motion then to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so those items are approved. In your packet, you have Sherburne School Committee minutes from February 10th and March 10th, and from the Regional School Committee from February 11th, March 3rd, and April 7th. I'll just, because our meeting is a little off-scheduled next month, we're not on Tuesday again, we're on a Monday again, June 15th. So I'm going to make sure, mark the calendar for that. And we will have quite a few.
No, it's, we have to stick. It's probably the biggest.
Dover PTO budget.
Dover PTO budget.
Except the DSCF grants.
Right, grants. And then any other cleanup items, so that's it. Any other items for Stephen? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that one.
Second. All in favor? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.